Hey, how's it going? Uh, well, me starting in a couple of minutes, just wondering. A little banter on afternoons. Seeing that it's six o'clock, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. That's kind of a dud, but anyway. Uh, Clerk Halanga, will you call the roll?
Mayor Pro Tem Wilcoxen.
Present.
Mayor Brown. Councilmember Sweet.
Present.
Councilmember Tucson.
Present.
Councilmember Dee Simmons.
Here.
Councilmember Jay Simmons. Councilmember King. The four present and three absents, there is a quorum.
I would entertain a motion to excuse the three, uh, absentees.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, um, Jennifer Simmons will be here shortly, um, the mayor will be here, um, at about six thirty, so. Um, given that, um, people would do care to rise, uh, for a moment of silence, and a pledge of allegiance, if you were inclined. Evan, would you like to lead them? Now we find ourselves at, my computer going off, uh, are there any, uh, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support. Any discussion, any additions, any changes to the agenda? If not, if you would call the roll, Mr. Hungler? I have voice vote, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
President passes. Now's the time that we take public comments, um, we will take people from the signup sheet first, um. Again, this is not a dialogue, but a chance for the public to, uh, give their opinions. Nobody signed up, alright, um, is there anybody online?
If anyone online would like to make comment to council, they'll have three minutes, please raise your hand. No hands have been raised, council.
Alright. Well, seeing no, uh, nobody stepping up for public comments, um. Would you like to say something, Mr. Tucson? Alright.
Also, we believe in justice, honesty, and transparency, right? We believe in those things. But as I said, last week, we don't have that in the city of Ypsilanti Police Department. Anything that's happening with these officers, anything that's happening to the city manager or being blamed to either, it's not their fault. Especially as a percentage of the police department. It's poor administration, misbehaved administration. It has nothing to do with Sister McMullin, it has nothing to do with the officers out here in the audience, has nothing to do with them. Misinformed. Misinformed. And there has been so much retaliatory things going on in the police department is unbelievable. Ashley did a great job for the accreditation program. She was used. She was used, council, she was used. Walker, great job in the detective department. But ultimately, she end up being what? Used. How was she used? Retaliatory measure. Yucus, y'all's chief over here, he puts Walker into the detective department to what? He needed somebody to watch Annette Cloppet. But watch Annette Cloppet for what? She's doing an exceptional job. His job was to, him being a lieutenant, his job was to watch over the detective department, but what he did? He put the young sister in there that Annette was training and put her over Annette. Took all of Annette's coos away from her to do effective detective work. And that was not able to work from home, council, she was not able to work from home. But other officers was, she was told she could not work from home anymore. But you know, I, I hate these kind of things happens in my city here, this is my city, I don't care who don't like it, I will continue to say it, this is my city. And if you can't, oh shucks. I mean, Yucus need to become a Jonah. Come from the bottom of the ship, come up to the top and say, I'm the power of the father, put me on the board, so the script can go. I wish that he would leave my city and take all of those mutants that have helped corrupt in my city.
Is there anyone else? Republican county? In that case, let's move on to the presentation from, uh, Carlisle Wardman. You have an introduction from that, or just going straight in?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, um, council, tonight we have, uh, Ben Carlisle before council. Uh, we have, uh, received a proposal for services to assist the city with our water street development projects, the entire process. And I was pleased with the proposal that I received. And so Mr. Carlisle is here tonight to answer any questions. In your packet, there was an RFL and a resolution, uh, giving the cost of services and the scope of what we see, we should need from them to begin this work. So again, if you don't mind just introducing yourself to council.
Uh, thank you and good evening, it's nice to be in front of you, um, I'm Ben Carlisle, Carlisle Wardman Associates. Uh, we are a municipal consulting firm based in Ann Arbor, Michigan. Um, it's actually nice to be back in front of you, we have done, historically done a lot of work for the city of Ypsilanti, including a number of master plans, um, zoning ordinance rewrites and continuing service work. Um, we're currently not doing any work for the city of Ypsilanti, but we have a pretty long history with the city in terms of engagement. Um, I was, um, last week I was, um, reached out by, by Mr. McMullin to provide, uh, services to the city, um, partly in, in response to some, some overall staff changes, but also, um, in response to um, special assistance with regards to the water street development project. Um, she has asked us to put together a proposal to assist the city in the evaluation, um, of those two proposals and provide expertise, um, to you as you evaluate those projects, um, moving forward. Um, I will tell you, I don't really have a presentation tonight, so, um, I don't really have, uh, go into too much detail and, um, the scope I think will change based on as more information is gleaned through this process. So what we put together is really just a preliminary kind of scope of what we think the first initial steps will are with, with the contingent that this may vary and change based on, on more information. Um, but specifically, I think what we think is most important that we want to assist the city with is first, um, creating a process for evaluation to ensure that, um, there are some objective standards under which we're going to review each of these two proposals. Um, two, um, evaluating the proposals with regards to your policies, goals, and your vision for, for the community as well. Um, three, we think it's really important that we have a, we vet the development team independently, both, um, for their credentials as well as past projects, financial stability, um, et cetera. Um, four, we think it's really important that we work with the city staff, elected officials to really reach out to those stakeholders that are important as part of the process to get their input when we evaluate the two proposals moving forward. Um, we will obviously work with your existing staff throughout the process in terms of what additional information we may need, as well as what we need to bring back with the council. But ultimately, I think what you are hiring us retaining for is to eventually come back with a recommendation to you, um, based on these two proposals, which one we think is viable, uh, which one we think needs some amendments or edits to move forward. And ultimately, if there's a next stage, this process assists the city once you have chosen for contractor vendor, uh, to assist you with whatever's needed in terms of getting that to the next step, whether that goes to planning commission, council, et cetera. Um, and so, again, I want to be very upfront, honest, that I think this may evolve and change a little bit as we get into uh, the process, but based on the information we, we received, I think these are the preliminary first steps that we think we need to undertake to start the, start this engagement. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from? Do Simmons?
Yes, hello. Um, so a couple of questions, so, um, and some of these might be for you too, Francis, so. Um, one is, obviously, I'm gonna assume that because there's been past work, that we've been satisfied with you all and um, and that the values that you put forward around responsiveness, commitment, trust, and success have been maintained through our previous projects, so I'll just say that, but I'm gonna guess yes, so that's good. Um, I'm wondering about, um, when thinking about some of the costs, what are some the past costs of some past projects, um, what kind of things those have ranged in? Um, and then also, when thinking about for this project, thinking about whether we have an expectation of a range of hours that we'd be looking to cover? You know, when looking at the, um, way, and, and also, I guess, how you all, um, manage hours and meetings and things, right? Because I was like, oh, three members of the, the top three members of the team are in a one hour meeting, that's $420, right? For one, one hour meeting, so I think about like, yeah, how many of those, and if we're doing, you know, any kind of conversations with folks, how that can balloon? So I'm just wondering what, what kind of expectations are laid there? And, um, yeah, like what that range would look like, what we can expect that we would actually pay for this process.
So did you see the price list as well for, so they have a staff, um, several levels, correct? And I believe the lowest of it was a support staff person. Correct, I don't have it in front of me, so, uh, I think depending on what the task is, that is who they will assign to that actual task. So I don't think that there, there will ever be a time where they have like all of them in one meeting.
Oh, I understand, but I mean, it does say that it's led by the top, there are four people who the project leads were. And I'm imagining, like, if they were coming to a meeting, it would probably be more than one. But I'm just trying to get a sense of that, and I, that's, I'm just wondering about the overall range that we could expect, because this kind of project, as you said, right, can evolve, it could grow, it can balloon. Um, this, this is a big project for us, two different development companies, you know, and so I'm just trying to get a sense, right, like it's that it could start and we could easily, it could just easily get, so I'm just trying to get a sense of what some of that might look like. Would you like?
Um, so again, I'm gonna kind of, um, uh, couch this with, uh, we are entering this a little bit with some incomplete information on our end too. Um, what I, what I would say to that is when we first were approached, um, what I had thought about doing was put together an actual scope with a not to exceed, and I just didn't think that was fair to you or for us with this regards to this relationship, just because again, I don't know how it will evolve. Um, in terms of pricing, um, we've been in business for forty years and we represent eighty communities in the state of Michigan. We don't make our money by price gouging our clients, um, and so if that is a concern, we can certainly keep that in mind. Um, we don't double dip in meetings where we will not send three people to a meeting, we'll keep our costs, um, you know, reasonable. Uh, we submit monthly invoices for your council to review, and if you think there's an issue with regards to price, we can certainly have that discussion moving forward. Um, the one thing I, I will just advise you is that I don't have a lot of knowledge about the water street development and the history, but I know that's been a complex project and process, um, and I think, um, you need some people with experience to help you with this. And so that's why we put three of our most senior people on this project, it's myself, it's past principal of the, of the company that's has forty years of experience, and it's another gentleman that, that has a significant amount of economic development and development experience with over twenty years experience as well. And so, um, where we can, we will certainly put our less, um, pricey staff to assist you. But this is a project of, we think of the scope and magnitude that you need some senior level people, and that's why we're dedicating those resources to you. Uh, if you are looking to, 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 to manage some prices and want lower level people, I'm not sure we're the right company for you, because I don't think we want to be associated with this project unless we, myself mostly, has a real hands-on approach to this project, just because of the scope of what we're, we're approaching. So I hope that answers your question, um, we're not in the business of price gouging our clients, we've had clients, some of them for forty years, and you don't make money by, by, uh, by nickel and dime and everything. So we will be cognizant of the price and be cognizant to make sure that we manage the process correctly, and, um, I think the first step that I noted is we'd like to create a process for evaluation, and a part of that, we, I think we have a better sense of what the project hours and the scope would actually be.
And so then, do you have a sense or from previous work that you've done with the city?
This is such a unique project. Um, most of them, them have been based on master plan or zoning ordinance rewrite, where we know the scope, we know what we're supposed to do, we know that the statute or what we're working with. This is just, it's, it's unique.
What about other projects similar to this that you've done in one of the other seventy-nine communities of the state?
Um, now I,
I'm just looking for like, uh, you know, a range, because right now this seems like we're gonna prove it, and I, I mean, besides seeing those lists, we have like, and I understand, like, I, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to pigeonhole you into something, I'm just trying to get like a sense of what I'm gonna be.
Of your community, I hope you'd ask me these questions, it's important. Um, you know, we can, if you're concerned about price, we can certainly scope this out in a number of ways. Um, we could do a not to exceed where we get to a certain point, and you, we just come back and check in with council at a certain point about whether or not we're in the right direction. Um, we can, uh, come back with a little more detailed scope, if, you know, if I get more information and bring that to you. Uh, I understand time is a little bit of the essence, so I think we want to get this started sooner than later. Uh, but again, we, we do have, we do have monthly invoices that you will receive. Uh, and so you'll have a, a better s- a sense of what the monthly rate or this is going to be, and I, I assume as this goes on, those may go up and down and fluctuate a little bit moving forward, but it's, it's, I'm not trying to punt the question, it's a really difficult question to answer without having dug a little deeper into what the actual scope of the project is gonna be.
No, there's my. I'm good, no, I'm good, thank you.
Cool. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Tucson? Mayor?
Trying to figure out what we're talking about.
We're talking, we.
Which, our presentation, but we're, I'm looking for the, the numbers, sorry.
Uh, the numbers are on page, uh.
Page five of our proposal.
Okay.
Five of the proposal, but it's fifteen of the packet.
Thank you.
Um, I agree, this is, you know, I, I like the fact that this is hourly, um, and I had assumed that this would, uh, uh, follow the, the same kind of rules of, uh, say, the city follows per FOIA. The person with the, the least amount of, uh, salary that can uh, do the job would be assigned to do the job, and I understand that the point person would be, uh, Mateo.
Mateo and myself are the two, the two point person, yeah.
Um, I would like to see something built into this, uh, for review, either, either, you know, semi-annual, and I, I realize that the, this is gonna be heavily weighted up front. Um, and so, you know, maybe in the first thirty days or sixty days, we get, we get a, um, you're gonna give us those invoices and we can go from there and see what that looks like. And I realize this is gonna take a lot of time to, uh, get up to speed and get the background, so I'm sure there will be billable hours for that. Um, I like overall having, uh, somebody at our, at our, um, as a resource for this. Um, you know, we've seen other developments come and go and, and well, I'll just leave it at that, um, that have come and gone, and it would have been nice then to have, uh, a consultant that, that was, um, as, uh, experienced. So, so, um, and I know this is complicated with the, with the Brownfield issues, um, and, uh, you know, as much as I try to keep up on those things, it'd be nice to have somebody else who's, who does that, um, so. Um, so if we could build in something to this, to this, uh, contract, I have a, um, you know, a review, this is a three-year contract, have it come up every year for, for review, um, and assessment, um, I would like that. Um, Clerk Halanga, would we have to, uh, send this back to, uh, attorney for approval, or can we make the motion based on it? Go ahead.
So, um, in your, um, in your packet, I'm sorry, clerk, I didn't mean to cut you off there, um, in addition to our, this is our scope or proposal, um, the, the, your city attorney and I have worked out a contract, and that's in your, your proposal, well, there is a, um, contract, um, out clause, for lack of a better term, that both, both sides can, can terminate a contract, I think it was within thirty days, I believe, what, what the term is, so. Again, if you're not happy in thirty days, we, we are, you can cut us free. Um, and so that's built into your contract as part of just, you know, review, and it keeps us on our toes, make sure that we're providing the service that you need.
Yeah, that, that's pretty common in, uh, professional services contracts, the section of, uh, separability will have that thirty-day termination by either party.
Um.
Can we put a review in there? Would you be opposed to that?
Oh, certainly not, and you know, again, I put, I put three years in here just because I didn't know how long it's gonna take.
It's gonna take a while.
So, yeah, so, um, I'm open to a yearly review, that's certainly fine, and I hope I'm in front of you more than once every year for the project.
Yeah. Um, time is of the essence, three years, lots of money. I love that most of the contract was about insurance. Go figure, right? Um, some of the language in section nineteen, could we have that updated with, uh, Elliot Larson? Um, as is being passed, um, or has been passed, sorry. Um, and section twenty as well, so section nineteen and section twenty would be updated with the new Elliot Larson, um. Alright, my last question is not a question actually, but it's something that I can take up with the city manager, so, um. Yeah, any other questions? Or Mr. Carlisle? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. I don't believe. Is there, oh, there is a resolution, okay. So.
Who has the resolution?
Okay. So this was a presentation, and then moving into the, is that what you all did? The presenters.
That was just a presentation and a conversation, there's a, a resolution that goes along with this, um.
Okay. So council member Tucson.
Resolution.
Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero six four, it is resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti that whereas the city is desirous of developing a water street property, and the city has received two development proposals, and the city manager desires professional help in evaluating the proposals and has identified Carlisle Wardman Associates as a firm well suited to help evaluate the proposals and assist in the development process, and Carlisle Wardman has provided an acceptable proposal for the services. Now therefore, the city manager is authorized to enter a contract with Carlisle Wardman for professional services to evaluate development proposals for Water Street and other services that are needed, and sign the contract subject to the approval of the city attorney, and I so move.
Support, supported discussion from council or further questions?
Um, I guess I could make the comment that I was looking at before, but, uh, we have, um, money from the county Brownfield, um, that can be used for this purpose. And, um, at this point, I think we have a couple hundred thousand dollars that we have access to. Um, and this is a legitimate use for, for that funding. Um, so want to keep that in mind as we go forward.
Yes.
Um, that's all I've got.
Alright, anything further from council? Alright, speaking now and clerk Halanga, please call the roll.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
S.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Motion carries with five yes, one apps, or two absent.
Thank you, thank you so much. Alright. I'm assuming everything is normal on the agenda, and I'm just gonna keep on, alright.
Yep.
Uh, council member Sweet, you have our next resolution.
Uh, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti that the minutes of March, uh, twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three city council meeting be approved.
Support.
The move is supported. Any discussion or changes to the minutes? Alright, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Um, yes.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries with five yes, two absent.
I did.
See. Also, you have the, the, the next one, zero six six?
Yep, zero six five? Nope, six, six. Why don't have any, do I? I'm looking like, uh.
Yeah.
It is resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti that the certain ordinance entitled City of Ypsilanti Tax Exemption Ordinance, um, two zero six North Washington be adopted on second and final reading, and I so move.
Removed?
Support.
And supported. Good evening, Mr. Jacobs.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, good to see you. Um, you've already heard my, my spiel on this during the first reading, and I'm happy to, um, give you, uh, some more information or answer any questions that you may have. Um, there's been some more information provided for a value on, um, Chittister and Town Center and an estimated tax on those properties, so I thank the city assessor for getting that info between the meetings, a little bit selfful.
What pages is?
The additional information has been updated on page thirty-six of the packet.
Thank you. No problem. Wait one second.
It's the last, it's the, it's like the thirteenth page of the, yeah, it's the, yeah, page thirty-six of the packet, well, okay, I have a question, can I, Councilmember Simmons? Hello. Um, so I know I, uh, I missed the last conversation, um, with council, but, um, some of the questions I wanted to try to get a sense of, um, is just thinking about, so, uh, I'm trying to think here, um, which one to go with first, okay. Um, one of the things which I totally understand, I think I at first had a misunderstanding, because I thought I heard that this was going to be set up like the Clark Road Development, which had the emergency services agreement. Um, and I'm trying to understand, I guess, what is going to be our process or our way of determining whether we use a pilot or an emergency services agreement? Um, in terms of thinking about kind of what our reasoning is between those different things and recognizing the difference of amount that the city would um, gain through those different, you know, I mean, this is obviously a pretty small amount with, um, you know, at seven thousand nine hundred twenty dollars, um, and the city would get um, about, what was it, three thousand of that?
Yeah.
Um, and so, you know, not a very much money, but also, um, is four thousand dollars, just really insignificant for the city or not, you know, those are the kind of things I'm trying to get a sense of. is four thousand dollars, just really insignificant for the city or not, you know, those are the kind of things I'm trying to get a sense of.
Yeah, I mean, so in terms of the ESA, I, I think it made more sense for the Clark Road developments where the amount, um, lost through a pilot sharing with all the other taxing jurisdictions, um, was pretty significant on a yearly basis, you know, tens of thousands of dollars versus four thousand dollars in this case, um, and I think a better case could be made for very, very dense housing on the outskirts of town, sort of with less access to some of the, you know, um, transit and other, other opportunities afforded in, in denser populated areas. And so perhaps it makes sense to do an emergency services agreement for developments such as that, given the conditions, the scope, the density. I don't think you can justify it necessarily here, I think part of the reason why we, um, eliminated the supportive housing ordinance was to treat housing like this, the same as any multifamily residential housing. So to make the case that you would consume more fire, uh, police, um, resources at the twenty-two unit two-zero-six North Washington property, um, compared to the, you know, twenty-two units across the street, I don't think a, a great case could be made for that. Um, and that was why when we looked at it as staff, we didn't think there was the justification as there was in the Clark Road projects, um, to make that case for an emergency services agreement.
You have additional questions? I'm sorry, I didn't hear them. Oh, wait, no, go ahead. Okay. Uh, other questions from council?
Um. Yeah, I'm not sure I understood my rationale at all, I mean, you collecting money as a tax at Valerian Taxes, um, pays for a lot of different things, and I don't, I don't see how the, the Clark Road is any different than anything else. You know, this is like, size doesn't mean anything, you've got more people out there, you've got, you know, different things, I, but, but, you know, this is and, and I get the, the supportive housing, you know, change in the, in the, in the zoning, and I totally agree with that, but the units across the street are paying taxes, this one isn't. So it's like, I don't, I don't understand how that comes into making a rationalization for, or not having this be a, an emergency service agreement or, or, um, I, it just doesn't make any sense, I don't, I don't, I don't understand how the rationale comes in.
Yeah, I mean, the emergency services agreement, when I dug him out for eight forty-five and nine forty-five Clark Road, are based on one premise, that um, elderly or low to moderate income residents require a higher level of police and fire support services. That is the premise used in the ESA. And I didn't believe it would be appropriate to draft that agreement for this development. The whole thing is built on that premise.
Right, but the, the, what I'm getting at is ESA alone versus, uh, with a nominal, uh, pilot versus the pilot, I mean, this is like, that's a, it's not based on size, it's not based on location, it's based on philosophy of how you interact with the intergovernmental, you know, with our friends who would have collected that tax, but, but I don't, I don't really understand that rationale, um. In this case, you know, I, I, I'm just saying, I, I don't, I don't see that makes a difference. Really, I mean, this is like, we're either giving a pilot or not giving a pilot, and, and, you know, those emergency services are emergency services, so if this pilot is enough to, to cover those services, then that's fine.
Hmm.
Um, the pilot there may have been reasonable to do that too, but we decided not to give it up, so, I, you know, I'm I don't really see that there's a difference in these things, um, move past that, um, I was looking at the seven thousand nine hundred twenty dollar figure, and I looked at the gross rents for this, and put in the point four percent, even if you used the net rents, that didn't come out, I'm, I'm questioning where that number came from, because I got eight thousand six hundred dollars and nine thousand dollars, depending on which of those values you have, at, at two fourteen or two twenty-six thousand.
Which, sorry, which, um, number do you need clarification on?
Uh, the pilot itself, the seven thousand nine hundred twenty dollars?
Yep, seven hundred fifty times twenty-two units times twelve is a hundred and eight thousand dollars or so, and then you take four percent of that total. That's how you come up with seven thousand nine hundred twenty dollars.
Oh, because I used the numbers that they put in their proposal for the gross rents and the, and the, the net rent, and neither one of those come out to that. So it's like.
The rental revenue for twenty-two units, seven hundred and fifty dollars a month comes out to a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. Four percent of a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars is seven thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars, that's how it was.
Are all of the apartments set to be seven fifty, because I know that they had the different ranges, um, but they're planning on.
Housing vouchers and stuff, so.
All of them being priced the same, even though they might have a source of income difference.
Right, yeah.
Interesting.
He's looking at the other questions from council? Okay.
Just curious as to why the one ninety-eight isn't in this, this proposal from them, yeah, another question for, um, for Mike, but he's not here, um, and looking at the, uh, the net operating income, they go in the, in the red after two years, and it steadily goes down from there, and, and, uh, shows that they have a negative cash flow after two years as well, and I was trying to figure out, um, you know, they base their, uh, but they have a one percent increase in, in rents and three percent increase in, uh, expenses. And that explains that, but I'm, I'm curious about how they're gonna, where they're getting the funding to, um, to work in that deficit, I mean, after fifteen years, you know, you've got up to forty-three thousand dollar deficit, um, any idea?
I think they're, they have other funding sources to help subsidize.
Yeah, I guess the other questions are, would be from Mike as well, but, um.
Do you have additional questions, Mayor John? All right, any other questions from council? On once? All right, well, thank you, Mr., I'm sorry, Councilmember Simmons.
Just one more question, because I was just, the other thing I noted was, um, the date, so, I, was the application due yesterday, are we just, so did they put it through with this anyway, and so this is kind of just tying that button?
We provided the certified resolution from the first reading, which was adequate for the application, and communicated to them that a second reading was forthcoming. Um, and so they can choose to provide the points, or a portion of the points in that lie tech scoring, or choose not to count it because it's first reading, um, rather than a second and final, so, um, that's ultimately up to Mr.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm really done now. Okay, thank you, speaking now, uh, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Motion carries with five yes, two absent.
Um, resolution zero-six-seven, I don't know who has that one.
Dee Simmons.
Oh, councilmember Dee Simmons.
This, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, the certain contract for art project in city parks with embracing our differences, Southeast Michigan Inc. and the mayor and city clerk are authorized to sign for and on behalf of the city of Ypsilanti, and I so move.
Support.
Been supported. Welcome back, Mr. Jacob.
Hello, I'm flying solo today without my friends Michael and Nancy to help give a little bit of background, but I'll do my best, we've seen this one before, embracing our differences of Southeast Michigan, did, um, two art installations, one at Parkridge last year, and one at Riverside Park, um, and, uh, those were chosen through a competitive nationwide process, um, through the larger organization of embracing our differences, along with local art, uh, from YCF students. And so you'll see examples of the art, um, beginning on page forty-seven of the packet. There are students from Ann Arbor, students from, um, Ypsilanti, um, students from all over the country, um, one of the conditions of the Arts Commission last year was that Ypsilanti students have their, um, art prominently featured among the national selections, and so they've really prioritized, um, students explaining international elementary school and YCS, um, and so, uh, we have a process to review the art specifically, um, and we no longer have an arts commission for a period of time due to a lack of membership, and so they have not yet vetted um, this art, because they are unable to meet, and, um, Nancy and embracing our differences of Southeast Michigan are looking to get this project going by the end of the month. Um, this is, uh, gonna also take place in Gallup Park in Ann Arbor, which is already agreed to host. Um, a little bit different than last year, they're providing their own insurance, and embracing our differences a sense, um, consolidated into a local nonprofit here as well, and so there's more organization behind, uh, the whole thing. I think this is something that they're looking to do annually, um, one last major, uh, difference between this year and last year is all of the tripods would be hosted at Riverside Park this year, um, instead of half and half between Parkridge and Riverside. There'd be five of them total.
There were three last year?
Three, there, yeah.
Uh, all right, comments or questions from council? Well, I will say, I'm glad that they're coming back, I'm sad that the Arts Commission is kind of deformed right now, but, um, even looking at the art, I'm excited that we are continuing this partnership, this work, and so very cool, a lot of the meaning behind the, the pieces that I'm looking at really resonate with me too.
Yeah, we have a lot of local talent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Looking forward to it.
Me too. Clerk Colinga, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Motion carries with five yes, two absent.
I'm gonna assume councilmember Dee Simmons has the next one. Oh, you have it, six, zero-six-eight? Oh, okay.
All right, so resolution number twenty-two-three-dash-zero-six-eight resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas the city of Ypsilanti has created a bicentennial commission for the purposes of planning the twenty-twenty-three bicentennial celebrations, and the bicentennial committee has identified several events that require a budget amendment, funds and expand funds, and now therefore be resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council approved the budget amendment as provided to support the bicentennial committee efforts, and I so move.
Support.
Been supported, good evening. Good evening.
Good evening. Um, so the budget amendment is for you for the bicentennial, spend the money that they've raised for the events, um, for both Au- the August nineteenth as well as the July fourth event. Just for the good of the public, this is money they've raised, and we are just passing through the city to be able to spend it after raise. Yep.
Thank you. Anything from council? All right. Clerk Colinga, please call.
Thanks, Kate.
Mayor Proton Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Motion carries with five yes, two absent.
And I believe councilmember Tucson, do you have the last resolution?
Indeed. All right, so resolution number twenty-two-three-dash-zero-six-nine, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas unsold properties seven fifty-six and eight fifty-six Harriet Street were conveyed, yeah, that's a word, conveyed by Washington County to the city of Ypsilanti, and the unfinished foundations on these properties pose a health and safety risk, and the city is responsible for the demolition of these foundations to prepare them for sale in the side lot program. The city is seeking to release the RFP and acquire qualified bidders for the demolition project and site restoration. Now therefore be resolved that the city, Ypsilanti City Council approves the release of the RFP for seven fifty-six and eight fifty-six Harriet Street, and I so move.
Support.
Supported, hello again, no. So tonight we're talking about the two properties that were conveyed to the city through the tax full of, seven-five-six and eight-five-six Harriet Street, and I have pictures.
Good, because Google Maps has an old picture of eight fifty-six. It still has a house on it.
Oh, wow. They're relatively recent, I took them in February, so.
Oh.
Pretty recent. Thank you. Um, and now they're, there's, city's responsibility, so both structures are dangerous, and the RFP is for the approval of demolishing, demolishing, excuse me, backfilling and seeding, so they can be sold.
Hmm.
Right, questions, comments from council about this? And Proton?
Um, I just want to say that, uh, former mayor, uh, Richardson will be glad to hear of this.
Yeah.
Has been, uh, a thorn in her side for quite some time, um, and so, um, glad to see that this is happening, um, and, uh, this can then go into the program for, uh, resale. Agreed.
Yeah. Agreed, I mean, even, every time I drive by, I'm just like, ugh, so, yeah. Excited. Yeah. All right, any other comments or questions from council? Or Miss Scott? You want these back? All right, uh, if there's nothing further, clerk, please call the roll. Thank you, lady.
Mayor Proton Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Yes.
The five yes, two absent, the motion carries.
Hey, thank you, okay, well, um, we're at liaison reports, um, Police Advisory Commission.
All right, so as many people know, last Friday, Thursday, I'm sorry, we had the meeting greet with, um, the potential, um, Ypsilanti Police Chief, Mr. Kirk Moore. Um, he answered a few questions, it was a nice event, you know, with a collaboration of the city and Y-PAC, it was very nice. That's all I have to report.
Um, their annual report is also in the packet.
That too.
Attached for our review. Um, I actually didn't have a chance to look at it, if I'm being honest, so I'll send questions if I have them to you, councilmember Tucson?
Absolutely.
To go back to the commission, uh, HRC is not meeting, Arts Commission is also not meeting, uh, Parks and Rec.
Uh, no updates since our last council meeting?
Thank you, uh, sustainability.
Um, I'm trying to remember, right? You'll have some to, but I do know the Sustainability Commission has been, um, one focus in preparing for the Earth Day, um, event that's on April sixteenth, uh, as well as, um, have been working on a, um, a government-to-government EPA grant, um, to do some work focused on, um, resilience hub network, um, and so oh, there's been a lot of time focused on that right now, and uh, meeting, we have our next meeting, um, coming up next week, so.
Thank you, uh, HD, is that Jennifer?
Yeah.
Yes. Planning.
Uh, we have not met, so, this month.
And ZBA is also Jennifer, correct? Yep, okay, STEMCOG.
Uh, nothing at this time.
Watts. Oh, that's Jennifer too, all right, Urban County, um, that is me, actually, we haven't met since the last time we met, um, so no update, we should have another meeting coming up next Thursday, I believe. Um, DDA. Christopher?
Yeah, meeting a couple of people.
Yeah.
To approve a bunch of special events.
So, yeah, sounds like fun. I'll be there. All right. Um, and then bicentennial. Oh, is that Jennifer too? Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Runs the road.
Runs the road, feel, cool, sorry.
That's all right. Um. Um, we're having a meeting tomorrow night, um, they've, uh, submitted a proposal to, to city staff, but not to, uh, D N R yet. Um, we don't know when, still don't know when the second round of funding for that grant is. And since the city didn't get funded for, uh, Prospect Park project, um, that is still a question that's up in the air is to which project gets put in for the second round. So, um, we have that. I haven't had a chance to go through their proposal, um, or have a conversation with, uh, Director Westler or the city manager, uh, McMullin, so, uh, we'll go through that and figure out which one's gonna go in.
Thank you. Uh, Council Propose Business, Councilmember Tucson?
Nothing at this time.
Councilmember Sweet?
Um, I just skin quicker than typically expected.
I know, right?
Um, I know she's not here, but I was just gonna say thanks to, uh, D P S staff for their management of some sidewalk projects, um, and Ward Three that have wrapped up. Um, as of late last week, so that was an undertaking in some of the neighborhoods, but, um, things seem to be um, settled and put back together and, uh, needed improvement over there, so, nice job.
Thank you. Um, Mayor Pro-Tam?
Um, nothing tonight.
Councilmember Simmons?
Thank you, uh, just a couple of quick things, um. One, I wanted to, well, this is, uh, partially a check-in, um, because I know I missed the presentations from the Water Street Developers. I saw that there was a request for questions, but I wasn't sure like what the process or where I should send questions or anything like that, so I just wanted to check, cuz I do have them, of course.
Yes, you can submit them to me. Today's the deadline by midnight, so if you have them, you know, in writing, you can submit them to me. Or you can email them.
And what, can you, what, what is, why is there a deadline, I guess? Is it just for them to have before our next process or timeline or?
Actually, that process was set before we, you know, started on this way, so we didn't have it, we don't really have a deadline now, but
I guess you want the question.
Yeah, we want the question so that we, we can begin to get answers and we can forward them to Carlisle Wortman and start the processes.
Okay. Thank you, and then, um, I also wanted to, this is a general announcement, um, for folks, which is just to know that our next council meeting on April eighteenth will be looking at the Chapter Seven Code, the, upon the mayor on a businesses. And I think we're gonna actually do it this time, so, um, just cuz I know it's been on the agenda. At will we, won't we, we will, but just to note that, and so I, I'm also wondering whether we're supposed to be submitting suggestions and adjustments now for that purpose before it comes back? Or if we should be holding those to, for that discussion?
It would be great if you could submit those now to Christopher. So that we could, um, actually look over them and incorporate as many as we can, rather than doing them all on the floor. It'll just be for discussion at that point.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, the other thing I, uh, let's see here, so which one first? Okay, one is, I would like to, you know, um, well, I'll back up and say this, what, well, no, I'll, I'll start, sorry. Um, I'd like to see if we could add to our agenda for discussion, a discussion about our commissions, the Human Relations Commission in particular. But also, I mean, we're obviously, this is a big issue, and I think we actually need to have a conversation about it. Because the reason why it came up again, which is always on my mind, but it came up again because, uh, over the weekend, I had, um, I had a meeting with three residents, two from Ward Two, one from Ward Three. Um, and, uh, they're interested, they're, um, in talking more about reparations and thinking about Oh, I like that. I'll let them know that we had a clap in the audience. Um, and so, um, starting the conversation and also thinking about how we stack and connect, um, the reparations conversations that are happening, um, um, another part, across the county. And so one of the suggestions, of course, when I'm talking to them, I was like, well, if you wanna have a group or committee to think about this, I actually would see it being best suited to be as a, a committee of the H R C. But our H R C is not meeting, and so there's already a big issue because a lot of things that the H R C would address, like source of income things, they're not able to do cuz they're not meeting. And then something like this, that seems like a good fit, is not able to even be proposed because they're not meeting. Um, so anyway, so that's, and so I just wanna put that out and see if there's any support for adding, um, a discussion about our commissions to our, an upcoming agenda.
Support that. Um, I don't know exactly how heavy the eighteenth is, but maybe um, I don't know if anybody knows off the top of our head, but looking at the next couple to see where we could fit. Oh, yeah, alright, well, on the eighteenth then.
Alright, thank you, and then, um, the other thing I wanted to bring up is that, you know, we've gotten, um, some communications from folks, and I've, I've heard this also before about the Police Department Building being closed. Um, and, um, and, you know, this being an issue. And I feel like I remember that there was supposed to be some, um, somebody that was supposed to be staffing there. And so I, I, I'm not sure about that, but I just am raising this too, and I'm thinking about, um, different positions that have already been allocated to the Police Department. And whether we can reassign one of those to be an administrative customer service, you know, clerk there. Cuz there's a lot of things that can happen, that, you know, people should be able to go there to do all their paperwork and things at any time during, you know, whatever hours we would say the bu- building is open for.
I've been a part-time person that was just hi- hired there for that.
Mm-hmm. I mean, I, I think I would even be happy to have, you know, full business hours. Um, even if it's not overnight, that people know that they, you know, if something happens, that they can go there to, you know, do all their insurance work, you know, oh, you know, all the different things that people go and fill out paperwork and things there for. Um, so I think that that, I'm just naming that as something that I, you know, this has come up, um, and I know this has come up even before I was on council. And, you know, I think it would make sense to have a staff person there. Um, and to determine what hours, I mean, we could probably get a sense from the community about what the most important hours might be. But, you know, I think even like eight to five or something like that would be good.
What are our current hours? If, are, are they not business hours? That's what I thought, we weren't open at the late night, night hours.
If, if anybody goes there during the week.
Eight to eleven.
But, yeah, there's somebody in there.
Eight, eight A M to eleven P M.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, well, I mean, I don't know, we, I mean, we all got that same communication from someone saying that they went, so I, we can follow up. I can follow up and get some more details about that. Um, so. Yeah, thank you for that.
I do know we've gotten complaints about like the late night hours and folks have felt, you know, wanted to be able to get into the department, and we've had discussion about that for sure. Figuring out what's the best practice there, and I've gotten some feedback from, you know, folks from other departments around that they do something similar, and so pardon me, I don't know what the best fix for, for that portion is, and we should find out what's going on with the, the email. Yeah, when I read it, I was puzzled, cuz I'm like, I know we're open during the business hours and into the late hour of the night. Okay, till eleven P M.
Well, alright. And then, um, this other piece, I, um, I was able to just have a quick chat with Francis beforehand, but um, Andrew, I'll probably be checking in, one of the questions I had was around if there's some kind of like exit survey or something that people leave commissions or, um, ghost out on commissions or all the different ways that people could not show up. Um, but just as a way to, for us to better have more, better information, and cuz I was noticing somebody had resigned from Y PAC, and I was wondering, oh, why did they resign? So, I mean, I can ask her, but, um, anyway, so, uh, Francis suggested that I connect with you about that. Um, and so connect, and then the other thing I just wanted to mention is just that, um, and I'll follow up, this is a, for Christopher and Holly, I think, I'll follow up with you. We have, have an intern who's working on, um, a survey for landlords, and so we have a little draft, so I'll be sending that along and seeing if we could put something together so we can start getting a baseline of understanding things like, you know, like how much is rent in the city? Like, we have no real idea. Um, and so it makes it really difficult for us to have conversations about, um, the housing crisis that we're in the midst of, so. Wanna put those things forward, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Tucson, you said you had something that.
I did, um, so, late, late last week, I was informed by my instructor at W C C in the H VAC program that between April third, which was yesterday, and April seventh will be free college week at W C C held virtually on Zoom. Um, so you could tune in and learn a lot about a bunch of different stuff, specifically in my field, H VAC. So you can learn what the technicians do when your furnace goes out or when your A C doesn't work. And I feel like that's really good information to know, just in case you feel like they're trying to cheat you out some money. So, um, you can register, participate in this program at W C C net dot E D U and get in there and learn some stuff for free.
Oh, that's really good. You should post that on, um, uh, social media and like maybe pop it to the city. Yeah. Okay, perfect, okay. Thank you for sharing.
Absolutely.
Um, for me, um, just want to lift that the Planning Commission's annual report is also in the packet. Um, on April twentieth, I will be attending E M U's Board of Regents meeting. Um, I was invited as they are going to be, you know, discussing and I guess honoring YPSY on our two hundredth year. So if any of you are available, it is like in the middle of the day, um, to attend, that'd be great, but I'm going to make myself available. Um, and then we also have our meeting with E M U and their leadership on April twenty-fifth at the President's House. Um, and so I just wanted to make sure that folks have that on their radar, cuz April is here, quick. I remember we planned this and it was like February and now it's April, um, so that is coming up.
Is that for all of, are we supposed?
It's for all of us, yes.
Okay.
You should have received an invitation in your city email, so I'm, I'm so glad I said it, cuz
Yeah, thank you.
I kinda missed it too, um, and it'll start at five thirty, I believe, reception, meet and greet, um, with our leadership there.
That's with the Regents, or that's?
It, so the, the Board of Regents meeting is April twentieth, but the twenty-fifth is the president and his staff and their community and government relations individual. Um, and some other folks on their side of things that will be there, I'm pretty sure. Um, Chief Fly said he'd be there, some other folks, their leadership. It has gone so quickly, I don't know. So, um, I am unsure of what I missed during public comment, but I'm assuming, as I see some of our friends in the audience, that um, there was talk about the Police Department, I don't know if you all had any conversation about that, if anybody spoke?
There was.
Not yet.
Not yet? Alright, alright, cool, so I'm, you know, I'm ready, I'm here. Um, awesome, so I will pass it to the city manager then.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder that if you have any questions, uh, for the two developers, that you can email them to myself. And I will make sure that they get to Carlisle and Wortman. Right now, there is no deadline. As soon as they give me one, I'll give you one. But, um, uh, the previous deadline was tonight at midnight, so you can either give them to me or email them to me. Uh, the other thing, um, there's been several staff changes, so I will give you a list of updates soon, so that you know who is where. Um, hopefully you guys saw all of our new hires. Um, so we're gonna try to do that more often so that you can see who's here. Thank you. We do have a new H R director that will be starting with the city on April tenth. And oh, lastly, a conditional offer was made and accepted, uh, by Captain Kirk Moore. So we have began negotiations and I hope to bring a contract for your approval on April eighteenth. And that's it for now.
Thank you, city manager. Um, I've already, uh, touched on our communications in the packet. But I think it's important that, um, Andrew, you know, when you brought up that budget will begin in May, and so folks keep that in mind that we're gonna have loads of discussion, so be prepared.
Andrew, can you give us those budget dates?
The first one is May second. The second one, which is just follow-up questions from council, that is May sixteenth. And then, I'm trying to think, the first day of Tuesday in June, I believe it's the second, but I gotta look at my calendar.
First Tuesday in June is the sixth.
Then the sixth.
Okay.
Thank you.
Second reading.
Thank you, city clerk. Um, alright, this is our second opportunity. Please come for audience participation, please come. Thank you.
Center Place four oh one West Michigan Ave. Um, so, um, I've been doing a lot of work, I wanna say thank you for allotting that budget to me and thank you for Steve's comment two weeks ago. But, um, so you see the Q R code on there, I'm still a little tech challenged, but I, I hear tell you can, that can take you right to the Facebook page. And I wanna be a little bit of a brat and say none of you have said you're going, I've already checked my
I definitely.
I, maybe you did, I'll check it again, but the majority of people did not say they're going or interested even. So I really appreciate people helping me with my publicity, my P R, my, you know, marketing, whatever you wanna call it, because I really depend on you being there, but also I have the elected officials table, and if, uh, on the back of that flyer, I wrote my email that I use for the Sustainability Commission, and if you're planning to be there, I'd like a photo of you and something like the award you, you serve or whatever, so I can say who's gonna be at the elected officials table, announce it on the event. And maybe even ta- talk about, you know, what green things you're interested in and that you're wanting to talk to your constituents, so I would really appreciate that, cuz I'm gonna make one more post about the elected officials table. Debbie Dingle, our congressman in D C, has said she will be there. Um, Senator Jeff Irwin is coming from the state level as well as hometowner, um, Jimmy Wilson, state rep. So, um, I would just like to see some of city council there, Mayor, Mayor, Mayor Pro-Tam, um. And also, I brought Andrew a flyer because I'm hoping that this can be put on. I don't know how the, if city's website works, but if someone could put the flyer somehow on the listserv or the city website, so anyone who looks can see what's going on and access that Q R code, I would really appreciate it. We are, I'm working feverishly to get this in on di- in, in on time and, um, doing what I can do within the constraints of time left. But I hope to see you there, bring your kids, it's intergenerational, and, you know, there's gonna be fitness classes on the deck and, um, food and I've decided to call the acoustic jazz we're gonna have, the Steve Summers Solar Cafe. So come on out and, um, be prepared to connect with not only some local business owners that are doing really great green stuff, but a ton of people who are committed green people who are not on commissions but are pushing everything to do, because this is not only an educational event, but it's a networking event. This is a really great opportunity to meet people who, A, should be on the commissions, and two, should be supported, and three, can help us build a resilient city for the climate change issues we know are coming. Thank you.
You had your hand raised, please? Uh, no problem, please say your name in thirty minutes.
My real name?
Done. Please.
My name's Blaine Coleman, and I'm here with Dr. Mojgan Savabyas Fahani. And you know, Ypsilanti, far as I know, is the only city in the whole state named for a freedom fighter, Demetrius Ypsilantis. And if you ever go to Greece. And if you ever go to Greece, people will be shocked and say, wow. So there's something a little different about Ipsy. And also the other thing a little different about Ipsy, Ipsy passed a resolution, uh, against the occupation and invasion of the Ukraine just one year ago. You might remember, and it demanded, uh, sanctions against Russia for all that violence in the Ukraine. So that tells me huh, city council cares about things like human rights. Doesn't matter where. And so I thought, let's come back here. We were here in twenty fourteen. And we asked for a resolution, uh, supporting Palestinian rights. I think it's probably a good time to come on back. Especially since you may be following the news, Israel right now has an especially crazy government that's being heavily funded by your tax dollars, your military aid tax dollars, four billion bucks a year. Just today, the top police chief in Israel said, here's what he said. Uh, he said Arabs murder each other. It's in their nature. These are the kind of guys running Israel right now. It's not good. Uh, a very high ranking cabinet minister in Israel just said, according to him, the Palestinian people don't exist. It's not good. And, uh, it's not just words. They're killing Palestinians at an accelerated rate. So why should we be giving almost four billion dollars in military aid to Israel? At least we have the right to say, we object. At least we have the right to say, you know, we are against military aid to Israel. And we proposed a seven-word resolution that says just we are against military aid to Israel. It doesn't say boycott. It doesn't say divestment. It doesn't say any tricky kind of financial stuff. Just we are against military aid to Israel, period. And considering what's happening to the Palestinians right now, I mean, why the heck should we be funding that? And politically, why should we be giving our imprimatur to that kind of thing? Why should we be giving a seal of approval to that kind of violence, state violence? On top of that, you may know Amnesty International has declared Israel is committing the crime of apartheid against the Palestinian people. Amnesty International. Human Rights Watch has said the same thing, that Israel is committing the crime of apartheid against the Palestinian people. Black Lives Matter movement has said the same thing. South Africa has said the same thing. A big.
Thank you.
Anyway, please, uh.
There's a hand and then we can come back, back to you. Yep, no problem.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Ashley and I'm your administrative sergeant at the Ypsilanti Police Department. Um, I just, um, make it pretty quick, got three minutes, uh, to go off of what Mr. Tucson was saying about the accreditation process and how I was used. That's partially correct. But I was used for my talents, my fourteen years of law enforcement experience, um, from road patrol all the way to to get that task done. I won't go into detail of what that entails right now. But I will talk with each and every one of you, if you'd like to learn more about it. Uh, it's very detailed. Um, I'm also in charge of recruitment and retention. That is a daunting task in today's police world. I've recently hired six individuals to come to this department since November. Um, I'm very happy for that accomplishment. Huge. That's the number one concern in our department right now. So reduce that overtime. And the one way to do that is bring more officers, um, boots on the ground. You know, without somebody dedicated to not only the recruitment, but also the background and hiring process. That's extremely important as well. And that is something I do. Uh, there's actually two individuals who I recently hired who are actually sitting in, um, in the audience. You know, with, without somebody being dedicated to, you know, this position, you know, I'm, I'm here to help the department grow. I, I want to see it, you know, I want to help the city be, be the best that it can be. Um, you know, in, in recently, I've, I've caught wind of my position maybe in jeopardy. So I just wanted to put a face to the name. I'm here to serve you guys, here to serve the city. Um, there's a lot of work to be done and I'm willing to do it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. Uh, this is the poster. My name is, my name is Dr. Mojgan Savabyasfahani. Uh, I am, um, a native of the Middle East. Uh, one of the millions of people in the Middle East who have been the victim of US interventions, US occupations, US destructions of the Middle East. Uh, I'm here to ask you to show solidarity with people of Palestine who suffer under the most brutal occupation by an apartheid state, which is Israel. If you only even occasionally look at the news, you know that murder of people by Israeli police and Israeli military is a routine and everyday event in the Middle East, in, in Palestine. Uh, Israel is not only inflicting these pains on Palestinian people, Palestinians take the brunt of it. But the rest of us in the rest of the Middle East suffer greatly because of Israel's bombings, Israel's raids, Israel's assassinations. And as Blaine said, uh, many, many organizations have declared Israel an apartheid state. That's a state very similar to apartheid South Africa. Everybody knows I fought to get those bastards out of South Africa. I'm proud to live, to see that apartheid is gone in South Africa. I want to see that gone in Israel as well. So I think the way you can help us um, is by showing solidarity with people of Palestine. We are only asking that you speak up and say that you are against giving four billion and more to Israel every year from our tax dollars. Our tax dollars are precious. We can keep them here, educate our kids, send them to school, make them good participants in the society, not racist, but people who care about everyone and take care of each other. We need that four billion here. So I want you to just simply say, we are against sending them money. That would send a very clear message to our politicians here and politicians in Israel that we cannot have yet another apartheid state shoot our children in the face, in the back, all the time, when they like, whenever they want. And that we will keep paying them to do it. This four billion a year that the United States offers Israel buys United States hatred and buys United States all kinds of terrible, terrible feelings among people of the Middle East, all people in the Middle East. We must, it is our duty to show Palestinian people and people of the Middle East compassion and solidarity. The way we can do that is by saying very simply, we are against military aid to Israel. If you would please put this on your agenda for next week or whenever your next meeting is, we will be happy to come and follow it up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone, I saw your hand that, yep. Good evening.
Hello, I'm Nancy Margolis. I'm with Embracing Our Differences. I really just wanted to thank you for hosting Embracing Our Differences at Riverside Park. Again, this year it's going to be bigger. It's going to be even better. And I would love to have you all involved. I have some brochures if Chris wouldn't mind passing them out, just so you can know, learn a little more about embracing our differences. Do you have any questions for me at all?
Oh, we love what you're doing.
Wonderful. The banners will be up May first, I hope, and will be through, um, October this year. Because we give free, uh, field trips to all the schools and any classes that want a free field trip, we pay for the busing. And we have a docent to take the students on a tour. And we found out last year that the weather was nice enough in October to be able to take tours. So we decided to keep them up again for, through October. So thank you again very much. Yes.
Yeah. So you just said that you do, this is a very big interest to me, field trips, because my daughter is at a school that does not have field trips.
Oh.
I know. So anyone who says they have money for field trips, I'm just trying to figure out how to get that.
Is this a public school, Ipsy public school?
Yes, yes. But according to what I've learned so far, it's by teacher. And so some of the schools that, you know.
It's totally free. So the teacher just has to go, uh, to the, actually, we have a sign up sheet and the sign up sheet is on the website. Uh, the teacher can sign up on the website for a free field trip. And then she just goes to principal and the principal arranges for the busing and we get the bill.
Hmm. Okay.
I'd love, which school are you in?
Ford. Yeah, let's break this down. I want to make sure that they all get to come. So, um, yeah. So I'll probably follow up because.
Wonderful.
That's great. Is the web, is the website here?
EODmichigan.org.
Okay.
You'll see the field, the field form for that. Any other questions? No? Okay. Thank you again very much.
So much. Thank you. Oh. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michael Apple. I'm with Avalon Housing. I thought I was coming near the beginning of the meeting to tell you I'd be happy to answer questions. I missed the early start, so I'm here at the end of the meeting to say thank you for supporting us. Um, we've been working since council first, uh, chose us to, uh, be a partner to redevelop that site with your staff who have been very supportive. Um, and we greatly appreciate your vote. We of support, uh, today, we submitted the most important funding application to Mishta yesterday. Um, we're hopeful that by early to midsummer, we'll get good news that we have our most significant financing in place. But before that, we know we still have some unfinished local business. Both going back to the historic district commission for a final review of our redevelopment plans and the construction. And then a community benefits ordinance process as you, uh, put it forward. So thank you again.
Good evening.
I am Detective Sergeant Jessica Lowry with the Ypsilanti City Police Department. I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you for humoring me with my very emotional email that I sent out to all of council.
Hi.
I just wanted to take a moment to let all of you know that, um, myself and city manager McMullin had a chance to sit down and have a conversation today and express my fear for the department and what information I became aware of regarding the changes that were happening with Detective Lewandowski and Detective Copick leaving. And my fear of what would happen to our city in that process. Um, in talking with her this afternoon, I became aware that Detective Copick has decided to unretire. And she will be staying with our department. I don't know how long, uh, but that's been made aware to me. And in speaking with her, I basically was elaborate on what Sergeant Kofal explained earlier about new officers coming into the city. And we agreed that with more boots on the ground, that it would be in the best interest of the department and of the city that there would be two detectives in there. So I will be staying in the Brugero as the detective sergeant, uh, effective immediately to my understanding. And it will be myself and Detective Copick continuing to take care of the city. I just wanted to say thank you for humoring me and giving me the opportunity to come up here and speak and say thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your work.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to address council in the audience? Alright, anybody on Zoom?
Anyone participating virtually would like to make comment, please raise your hand now. Uh, no hands are raised, council.
One last go in the audience. No one?
All right. Um, I guess the last remarks from the mayor would be, I'm really glad that all of this was figured out. Um, that was a point of concern and a little bit of confusion. So I'm glad that we've gotten things in the department worked out, um, for the time being at least. Uh, all right. If there are no other, no further important pieces, then the meeting is adjourned. I don't even know what to do.
Hey.
Yeah, I'm so.